All righty. So, we will call to order the April 25th, 2023 Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Workshop. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Baxter?
Here.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Moreno?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sax?
Here.
Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner Woodward?
Here.
Thank you.
All righty. With that, I have asked Commissioner Barnett if he could lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you're able to, please rise.
Eternal God, in these troubled times, when anxiety runs high and frustration runs deep, in the face of political transitions and an economy writhing in disarray, we are grateful for reminders of your presence with us. Your love for us, your grace towards us. Teach us, teach when we think that we do not have enough of this, that, or the other, to be more grateful for what we do have than fearful about what we don't, and more appreciative of what we have left than embittered over what we have lost. Show us, O God, where we need to be more swift to bless than to belittle, to more quick to love than to loathe, and in this season of Thanksgiving, more generous of our offered compassion to the forgotten and forlorn. Make our lives the answers to the very prayers that we offer in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, since this item went out, we did add the fiscal year 2023-2024 Action Plan from Housing and Economic Development. That will be Item C. We renumbered the original C to D, and then also renumbered D to E. That concludes substitutions, additions, and deletions.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? We have a motion from Commissioner Moreno, a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to regular agenda, Item 3A1 and 2. These are, we need, on Item 3A1 is a motion to receive and file. We have a motion from Commissioner Moreno, a second by the Vice Mayor on Item 3A1. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to Item 3A2, this is a motion to approve contracts and claim settlements as submitted by various departments of the Clerk and Controller's Office. We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Moving on to our workshop. So, just as we get started this morning, as you know, this is a workshop. This is an opportunity for the Board to be informed and educated and have open discussion in the sunshine over programs, policies, those sorts of things. Again, and I want to thank Administration, we have, we're trying, I think, our second time now where we have removed the time certain, which I think is going to be beneficial as we move through these items. We can take as much or as little time as needed, and so that's our plan for today. We will take a lunch break, and so we'll try and do it as close to noon as possible, but we may need a little bit of flexibility as we move through these items. With that, I think we are ready to get started. So, our first item is Item 4A. This is a PalmTran Overview and Connection Efficiency Program update.
Thank you.
Mr. Bon-Laren, you are recognized.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Thank you to Ms. Simba Tamba, who is our County Attorney for PalmTran, who will be assisting us today with our presentation. Just quickly before you, I wanted to run down some of our staff at the table and some others. At the end of the table, to my left is Lou Ferry, who's our Senior Manager of Paratransit, Dave Rochelle, WSP, one of our consultants, who you'll hear from some of the research they did, but 30-plus years in the business, and excited to have him back again. Executive Director of PalmTran, Clinton Forbes. Lynn Johnson, who's our Director of Administrative Services. And then Yash Nagal, who's our interim Director of Transit Planning. We have before you what looks like a lengthy presentation, but we're going to try to move through it rather quickly. There are a number of introductory slides on just some background that we wanted to make sure that you had. We'll get into some more of the RPM in terms of our paratransit, some of those discussions, and really end it up with an opportunity for you to engage in some robust Q and A and some discussion points on a few things that we think are important for the future of transit, and will help provide you with some of the lead to do that. But if you could just indulge with us for the next 20 to 25 minutes or so, just to kind of get this information out to you, and then we can come right back and do some of the Q and A. I mean, our agenda that we'll have today, which you'll see on the PowerPoint up aboard, we're going to start with our PalmTran history and overview of those projects. We'll look at some of our finances and our peer analysis and financial overview, our connection efficiency project we have, our Go Glades, and some upcoming projects, our RPM 1.0 and 2.0, our micro-transit options, and then some discussion points. And I'll hand it over to our Director, Clinton Forbes, to lead us off.
Thank you, Todd. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the Board of County Commissioners, Madam Administrator. Starting with this slide, in Florida, more than 30 fixed route systems exist. Just want to note, none are financially self-supporting. We have five rail systems, which include the Skyway Express in Jacksonville, Sun Rail in central Florida, in Orlando, the Tico Line Streetcar in Hillsboro, Tri-Rail, of course, we're all familiar with, and Metro Rail and Metro Remover in Miami-Dade County. I happen to be the Chair of the Florida Public Transportation Association, which represents all Florida public transit agencies and the transit business community, whose mission is to continuously support and improve public transportation and improve mobility options in Florida through advocacy, innovation, education, and partnerships. South Florida, as you know, is the most populous area in the state, and we are recognized by the Federal Transit Administration as part of the Miami urbanized area. We are not recognized individually. We are recognized as a region. And so, as a region, this is how federal funding is apportioned. It's based on your population in that region, your ridership, and the miles of service. We receive more than $20 million in federal funding, and it's based on formula funding, based on those characteristics of population, ridership, and miles of service. And it assists us in funding our bus operating, bus facilities, and rural areas. So, all public transit agencies report to the FTA's National Transit Database, which is the repository of data about the financial operating and asset conditions of American transit systems. Here's a little on PalmTran's history, more than a 50-year organization. Public transit began in Palm Beach County under the Florida Transit Management Company with 20 buses and seven routes. In 1980, service expanded, 60 buses and 22 routes, and the agency was renamed CoTran. In 1996, CoTran was restructured to over 150 buses and 30 routes, renamed PalmTran, and became a wholly owned and operated subsidiary of Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners. '98, the ATU certified with Pope, with PERC, and that's our frontline employees, our bus operators, our maintenance employees, our cleaners. In 2002, the SEIU, which is the bargaining unit for our frontline supervisors, they certified in 2002 with PERC. In 2015, the Board of County Commissioners established the PalmTran Service Board, which delegated some of the responsibility to hold meetings and public hearings and approve or disapprove service adjustments to the fixed route bus system. And we'll talk more about the RPM that was implemented in 2018. At your request, at the April 18th Board of County Commissioner meeting, we have developed a fixed route map with the Commission Districts overlaid over our transit system. The table on the left shows fixed route, the table on the left shows fixed route service available by route in your respective Commission Districts. And because the scale of the map may be difficult to ascertain in the quarters, in the table on the right, we have listed the routes in numerical order and indicated the major arterial that the bus traverses. So, we have distributed these maps to all of you, and as we discuss these routes, more specifically later in the presentation, you can use these maps to orient yourselves. As we are all too familiar, PalmTran serves one of the largest municipal areas in the eastern United States, more than 2,000 square miles. Our modes includes the fixed route, paratransit, and mobility on demand. We serve nearly every corner of the county, from Jupiter to Boca, Raton, to Palm Beach Island, to the Glades. You can see our vehicle composition. You'll note that the vehicle assets are inverted to what you would see at a mid-sized transit agency, more than twice the number of paratransit vehicles and fixed route vehicles. There's, I don't believe, a mid-sized to large transit property in America where there are twice as many paratransit vehicles than there are fixed route vehicles. And so, we'll talk about that composition as we, later in the presentation. You know, there are incredible people, which are our most important assets, that deliver on our mission every day of providing access to opportunity for everyone safely, efficiently, and courteously. You know, public transit is not important because what it is. Public transit is important because what it does. And what it does is connect people to each other. It connects people to jobs. It connects people to play, to fulfill important medical events. Here are some of what our customers had to say about our services.
So, how long have you been riding PalmTran?
It's about six years.
I've been riding PalmTran since I was about three years old.
I've been riding PalmTran for 27 years now.
I've been riding PalmTran for about 30 years now.
That's a long time.
Since 1992.
For the last maybe three weeks, and I just arrived here.
How wonderful. So far, what's your favorite thing about riding PalmTran?
Don't have to drive.
It's easy.
Convenience, many stops.
It saves me money, and I get to meet interesting people.
The rapport I get from the drivers, I like the service that I get, it's timely. I can always count on getting there on time.
Well, it's both efficient. It has the ramps with the lifts, we've got the wheelchairs.
Even though, even though I got my own driver's license, I still have my PalmTran ID.
The drivers are great, the people that ride are good people.
We ride PalmTran because...
It's so easy to get around town. We love it.
My name is Joe Harrison. I ride PalmTran because they're dependable.
My name is Darcelle, and I ride PalmTran because it's convenient.
My name is Denise Carter, and I ride PalmTran because it gets me back and forth there.
We're the Davis's, and we ride PalmTran because we love it.
Thank you for allowing us to share that with you. As we continue along with our system overview and operational profile, this is what I consider our street furniture, is our passenger amenities. We have over nearly 3,000 bus shelters, nearly 700, I'm sorry, 3,000 bus stops, nearly 700 bus shelters. We have benches. Again, all of these amenities for the customers as they wait for the transit. And of course, we've introduced the semi-seats, and we've done so when public right-of-way is not available, to install a bench or shelter. PalmTran has facilities in the north, south, east, and west parts of the county. Here you see our north county facility in West Palm Beach, our new Delray headquarters, a $25 million expansion, fully funded by the federal government, LEED-certified, that was completed in '21. Also, we have a facility in West Palm Beach, which is our paratransit facility, located next to the EOC, and our west county facility in Bell Glade. There are also two facilities that are not shown here that are managed by our private providers, our paratransit providers. Here you see our major transit hubs, and we talked about this on April 18th. Of course, Wellington Mall is a major transit hub, our Town Center in Boca Raton, the VA Hospital, I think that was mentioned last week, that is a major transit hub in our system. The Gardens Mall is another major transit hub. And our primary transit hub, which is the multimodal facility that connects with Tri-Rail, Greyhound, Uber, Lyft, the City of Miami Trolley, is our intermodal center located in West Palm Beach, just a few blocks away. We have a plethora of accomplishments, large and small, but I would like to just share some of our more significant recent accomplishments with you. The Paradise Pass has really been a game changer for customer convenience. We designed and delivered a fare collection system where we have removed the guesswork of what form of fare payment is accepted on the bus. We ask our customers and our potential customers to just show up with any form of fare payment, and we will be able to accommodate you, be it a credit card, a smart card, a smartphone, a wearable, our Paradise Pass, you will be able to pay your fare. We don't accept American Express. And so, this really has been a game changer. You can see some of the numbers here, more than 24,000 unique Paradise Pass accounts have been created, and over 26,000 downloads of our Paradise Pass app. Now, I've asked staff to check these numbers because I can't believe there are more Android users than there are Apple users, but we'll check that. COVID-19 was a project in itself. Many innovations came out of this crisis for the transit industry. Our bus operator office doors, which were implemented to provide a barrier between the customer and the operator, and vice versa. Our bus operators love them. We now affectionately call them the Baker Doors, because Ms. Baker advocated for them and authorized funding during COVID. The Quantum Q Strength System, which is an automated wheelchair securement feature on all of our fixed route buses, which allows greater independence for our customers using mobility devices, and a state-of-the-art air filtration system. This was another investment as a result of COVID recovery dollars, an investment in the safety and well-being of our customers and our employees. This state-of-the-art air purification system converts humidity into molecular hydrogen peroxide and actively sterilizes the entire air in the bus, including the stanchions and the seats. And so, we implemented this, and we are actually, because it's an invisible event, we're actually playing this on our monitors on the bus while the bus is in service. So, this is what it looks like. Thank you. As we move, I just wanted to make a quick point about how public transit, PalmTran, aligns and supports each of the county's six strategic objectives. So, in light of time, I won't go through all of these, but the first one is the one I'm most proud of. Public transit is about moving the economy. It's about access to jobs. I believe the census showed nearly 630,000 jobs in Palm Beach County, and we provide access to nearly half. In 2019, a year after the RPM, I really wanted to know where we stood in terms of key performance indicators related to ridership, productivity, efficiency, and financial investment in transit. So, I conscripted a study of our financial and efficiency performance compared to our peers, using WSP, a leading engineering firm. I really wanted to know where we stood in terms of local investment, cost, and efficiency. Now, there was a science behind selecting our peers, a methodology of selection, which took into account similar areas, populations, and size of the fleet. Now, while they're considered our peers, no area is uniquely the same, so they're essentially around the same and share some similar operating characteristics. So, here are the peers that WSP compared us to, and we'll share with some of the, share with you some of our financial and efficiency peer performance information. Here is total unlinked trips. This is ridership. Just to orient you to this slide, the salmon bar is the median. As you can see, we are just below the median, which isn't bad for the amount of investment we have here in public transit and our geographical size. This is fixed route ridership, essentially in how we compare to our peers. As you can see, we're slightly below the median. Total operating budget, public transit is a substantial investment. But as you can see, it's not only expensive here, it's expensive everywhere. And so, we are just below the median in terms of our peers and operating budget. Operating costs per service area capital, this measures the level of expenditure per resident in the community, the expenditure per head. And as you can see, the median is at 63.52, and we are the second to the last in terms of our peers. And again, that's the investment per capita in public transportation in the community. Subsidy per trip, we're spending a lot per passenger, but it's, so is everybody else. We're right at the median here. The variable that is driving, you know, you see Broward County Transit, which has a really low passenger subsidy, Orlando Links and PSTA, that's an effect of more ridership, more people paying fares, and density. Passenger trips per revenue hour, it is really the primary measure of a transit system's productivity. This is somewhat a bright spot for us, and again, this data is, was accumulated in 2019. This is the primary measure of a transit system's productivity, how many people are we transporting per hour, and it's an effect of frequency and a density. Here's another bright spot. When it comes to maximizing our federal dollars, we do well in this area. This is really a clear objective and directive from our county administration leadership. This makes us less reliant on general fund or ad valorem to fund capital, you know, our buses and our bus facilities. So, we are a little less than 100% now as late, considering we have very small capital contribution from ad valorem, so we're just a little under 100%. But as you can see, we top the list in really maximizing our federal share of capital dollars from the federal government. And here, we'll jump right into PalmTran's budget, our financial overview. So, here, this is a high-view snapshot of PalmTran's budget. It's a $190 million budget. You can see under fixed route, the personnel cost, the vehicle maintenance, fuel, and support services. We can go more in depth in that later on if you'd like to have some questions about that. But that represents 41, a little over 41% of our budget. Paratransit, as you can see, the personnel, the contracted services, it represents about 26.6%, and mobility on demand in the Glades, it's about 1.4%, which makes up an operating budget of 131,400,000. Just want to point out something here, and we'll get more into this discussion. The 44 million, so just take a round number, we have 10 million boardings in our system. So, we are using 40 or $50 million of our budget to transport 1 million of that 10 million boardings, and we're using 79 million to transport 9 million. And so, that's the glaring, and we'll show you some peer comparisons of how that is really out of kilter in terms of industry standards. And I'll let, allow Mr. Ben Laren to go over the revenues.
So, in terms of our revenues that we have, you can see our fares on fixed route and paratransit make up about 9.2 million, or just under 5%. From our grant side, 3.4 million of state TD funds, and 15.8 million in operating, which is roughly about 10% of the revenues we take in. We do have some advertising and other revenues as well that are just under percent. And then locally, our gas tax and our ad valorem, you can see the breakdown of $34 million of gas tax and $67.5 million of ad valorem, for a total of 101.4 million, and then the total operating budget of 131.4. And then again, you see our capital side, our capital grants at 28.6% is our federal funds that we get. On the next page, just, this is a reminder, this was a memo that was sent by Sherri Brown, our Director of OFMB to the Board, earlier this year, just to talk a little bit more about the state constitutional gas tax that comes down to us and revenue share from the state. Those dollars are used exclusively for engineering. We can't use those for transit. But if you go to the next page, you can just sort of see a breakdown of the gas tax that we use in Palm Beach County and where it goes. So, in the first section where you have the five, the ninth cent, the local option six, constitutional gas, county gas, and then that constitutional gas again, that all goes into the Transportation Trust Fund, of which that 27.5 million funds our engineering and a road program. You go to the next three, that is the PalmTran portion. So, as you can see, the ninth cent gas tax, we get 3.39 million out of that for PalmTran. That's the same split that engineering receives for that. Of the local option six cents, PalmTran gets 19.8 million. That was a policy decision of the Board many years ago. And then the overage on that, as you can see in the above lines, the local option six cent, 5.4 million and 23 is going to engineering. And then the local option five cents, you see that we split that 10.8 million with engineering, because if you just follow down to the next line, that's again, the split from the local option five cents that goes to the Transportation Improvement Fund. So, overall, PalmTran, you see 34 million, and then engineering is just over $38 million that they receive from the overall gas tax. So, we just wanted to share some of that financial information with you.
You know, public transit, you know, supports higher road capacity. You've seen photos like this, gives a really pictorial illustration on the geometric and spatial consideration with respect to modes of travel and how transit can reduce congestion. While it's very good that the world is transitioning to zero emission vehicles and eventually AV, it doesn't change how urban space is impacted. A fixed route bus or rail system is a tool that more efficiently use space in the urban core to move people. You know, we learned through the RPM and Jarrett Walker, an urban city is a place where many people live close together. The problem of urban transportation is a problem of sharing space. When you, when you drive alone or take Uber alone in a gridlocked street or freeway, you are taking probably more than your fair share of space. If you want to move people in a city faster than walking while allowing them to take up only their fair share of space, two options. Use a vehicle that is not bigger than the human body, usually bicycles or scooters, which is generally not practical for everyone, or the other option is to share a ride in a vehicle. If space is scarce, that vehicle will have to carry lots of people, and that's a fixed route bus. And so, this is just kind of an illustration of that. So, we talked about these metrics early on in the peer review, and here is how our modes stack up against, you know, passengers per hour, cost per hour, and passenger and ridership. So, you know, passenger per hour, you can see how we do with paratransit, fixed route, and Go Glades. 1.5 passengers per hour on PalmTran connection, and believe it or not, the industry standard is somewhere around 1.5, 1.7. And so, we're meeting, actually lower, and so, we're exceeding that standard. On fixed route bus, you know, for... On fixed route bus, you know, for being in COVID recovery at fourteen point four, it's pretty solid. And that's growing. And this is, by the way, March twenty twenty-three performance data. And when you look at Go Glades, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, you know, when we launched this program in 2018, we set metric goals, as you required, and our metric goal was four passengers per hour. And we are happy to report that we are now exceeding that metric, which is, again, above industry standards. But when we go down to costs, you could see that the costs are, differences are pretty glaring. Paratransit at cost per passenger are more than fifty-two dollars, fixed route at six dollars and sixty-two cents per passenger, and twelve dollars, nearly twelve dollars for Go Glades and the corresponding ridership. Now, we can, we can later go through the arithmetic of how this is done, but it's done the same way in the industry as required by the Federal Transit Administration. Now here, as we get into the routes, we have thirty-one fixed routes throughout the system. And so what we've done for you is really broken this down in thirds, so we can go through this. So the first third, the first ten routes are the systems most productive. So this is sorted riders per revenue hour, riders, passengers per hour. And this is kind of how we measure productivity. So the first ten are the most productive. We'll go to the second ten, which will be mid-range, and then the bottom eleven, which are, you know, essentially lagging in productivity. So just to orient you, again, we have thirty-one routes, this is the first ten. You have a column here that shows the routes, the productivity, the average monthly ridership, the peak, the weekday peak frequency. And frequency correlates to ridership. And again, we give you a little description of the service quarter. The next ten are mid-range productivity. As you can see, it goes from, you know, twelve twenty-one per hour down to eight eighty-nine passengers per hour. And again, this is mid-range. We still in a recovery mode here after COVID. And so these routes really still have potential for ridership gains. But as you can note, you know, on Route forty-four, number nineteen, we have two-hour service there. And that's a route that connects to the, to the airport, connects to Career Source, and, you know, comes every two hours. A person, if you miss a bus, you're working four hours. So that's, that's abysmal in terms of frequency in an industry, and it doesn't encourage ridership. And the bottom eleven, as you can see, are very low in productivity, going from eight, seven, five riders per hour to, down to under six. Now visually, when you're riding in your car and you look over to a bus with this type of productivity, you would probably see one or two passengers on that bus. And, or none. And, and so you'll say that bus is running empty. And these, most of these are considered coverage routes, and we'll get into that. And we do have recommendations. I do want to point out Route forty-seven here, where you have fourteen thousand average monthly ridership, but your productivity is second to last. And you say, well, why so many riders below productivity? It's based on the number of hours. So what we're not showing you here is the cost of this route. So we divide that by the number of hours. This Route forty-seven is actually in the Glades region. It's one that we actually merged in the Glades region that goes from, you know, Pahokee to South Bay. It's a very long route. I think it has over one hundred turns. It's not a very linear route, and we're right now working on making this route more efficient for that community. Just a quick mention on Route forty-three, this route traverses from the West Palm Beach Intermodal, traverses Okeechobee, and the terminus is at the Wellington Mall. This is one of our more productive routes. And so in 2021, we turned up the dial on frequency. We increased the frequency from thirty minutes to twenty minutes. Again, the frequency is how often the bus shows up at that stop. And as you can see, we saw a thirty-five percent increase in ridership. It's the passenger per hour metric is over eighteen passengers per hour. So just wanted to show you what happens when you increase frequency, you increase ridership. There's no more proven direct correlation to increasing ridership than frequency. And Palm Trans Connection, after the RPM in 2019, we began tackling the paratransit program to make significant changes, really to right-size this service and make it more efficient. So we conscripted the services of Delta Services to assist us with this program. This is some of the information we presented in 2019, and we would like to share with you our progress and discuss what is needed to continue our journey to make this service sustainable for the future.
Thank you, Clinton. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Talk a little bit about the Connection Efficiency Program. And as Clinton's talked about, you have some unique challenges in this county because you have a tremendous amount of fixed route service and population along the coast, but inland, it's much less dense. So that creates a unique operating environment. And to give you an overview of what the service is like here, most of the service, Palm Trans Connection, is ADA paratransit. That service is required by the federal government as part of the Americans with Disabilities Act, federal civil rights law. And that's a very expensive specialized service. And long ago, the county decided to simply provide that service, essentially that service throughout the county. Quite expensive, seventy, seven hundred and seventy thousand trips a year. Other services provided by Palm Trans is the TD Program, Transportation Disadvantaged Program. That's a state-funded program. And Small Program is a division of Senior Services, federal kind of meal program, and that's also a small program. And when you compare Palm Trans numbers to some of the peers on this slide, it's interesting. The closest peer is Links, which is six hundred and thirty-two thousand, but Links is three counties. And Palm Trans is one county. So you can see, we're providing a lot of paratransit service here. So because of that, Palm Trans wanted to look at how could we make the service more efficient? So they came up with the key, the Connection efficiencies project back in 2019. And we looked at a number of different things. The first one we really looked at was, are we making sure that the right folks are using this service? Because ADA paratransit is supposed to be for passengers who can't use the accessible fixed route network, we want to be sure that we're doing what the federal regulations say, and that's to provide a rigorous, effective eligibility process. So we'll talk a little bit about implementation of changes there to make sure that we're educating people and making the right decision about who's using this service. There was also concern that as demand was rising, we couldn't always meet the demand, so we wanted to add an overflow service, so in case the system was full, we could kick some rides over to like Uber, Lyft, or another subcontractor. And that's actually just been implemented with the contract I believe you passed last week. So that's going to give additional capacity and additional flexibility to operations. So if we have a peak in demand, you can punt those trips over, and that will improve your efficiency and your on-time performance. And we're also, we took a look at some alternatives to providing ADA paratransit throughout the county. There may be some less expensive ways. We can still provide service, but we can do so in a more cost-effective way. So a few kind of cost and efficiency opportunities that were identified here, I'll run through them quickly. The, the basic one is the service area. Federal law requires that ADA paratransit is provided within three-quarters of a mile of fixed routes, local fixed routes. So it's really not a very large service area, because it's intended for people who can't ride the bus because of their disability, so they can use ADA paratransit instead. So that's the requirement. Here in Palm Beach, you provide this service throughout the county. So it's significantly beyond what you're required to do under federal law. Also, the TD Program, there's been tremendous demand for this over the years, and even though Palm Trans always exhausts the funds, they still continue to provide the service, you know, being good stewards and good public servants. The same thing is true for the DOS Program. Generally, services provided well beyond the funds that are available for that program. Something else is that the federal regulations allow transit agencies to charge twice the regular fixed route fare for ADA paratransit. So in this case, it would be four dollars, could be charged for paratransit rides. And that's simply because the feds recognize this is a very expensive service to provide, and a higher fare can help with demand management, where people are making a choice, which service will I use? Here, you charge three fifty, so you're charging a little bit less than you're allowed under federal law. And then the other efficiency opportunity we identified was with eligibility, where the eligibility process here was generous, let's say, and we were looking for ways to enhance it and make sure we're making more thorough assessments. So to give you a sense of what I'm talking about when we talk about the service area, like where you have to provide service and where you don't, the map you're seeing now, this is your fixed route network in the county. So the purple lines are the, are the fixed route network. The shadow that just appeared over those lines is your federally mandated three-quarter-mile service area. So that's where you have to provide paratransit. Several years ago, the county decided to expand that, and that's where the purple is. So that has been the policy decision of where you'd provide ADA paratransit in the county. But the reality is that you provide that essentially everywhere, except the wetlands where no one lives. And TD as well.
That's pretty much all the county.
Yes. Next slide. So in terms of like where does Palm Trans fall, it's very interesting to look at a couple of these numbers. As Clinton mentioned, because you have such a large area that's getting what we call demand response transportation, paratransit, twenty-seven percent, a third of the budget of Palm Trans is spent on paratransit-type services, which is extremely unusual. In Florida, you typically have, because the TD Program hire the national average paratransit services, because there's some state money available. But even with that consideration, Palm Trans is way above all the peers, as this graph shows. And an even more interesting is the fleet. Seventy percent of the fleet here is paratransit-related, which is extremely unusual. I've never seen a system, you guys win the prize, for having the biggest proportion of your fleet doing paratransit. And again, that's a function of the reality of service. Fixed route doesn't make sense in some of these areas of the county, demand response is what does. So when we implemented over, actually during COVID, we implemented the new eligibility process. That was the first step. The idea there was to put a new process in place that educated passengers as to what the purpose of Palm Trans Connection is. It's really for passengers who are unable to use fixed route service. It's a rigorous phone interview, and it's really had some spectacular results. New clients per month have gone from four hundred and twenty-eight to a hundred and twenty-nine. So we've really, I would say, right-sized the program. And what's interesting about this, as important for you folks as elected officials, is there have been very few complaints about this. And what this shows is that the people who were registering for Palm Trans Connection really didn't need it, a lot of them. So now the process educates people. It makes sure folks understand what this program is for, and only people who need it are being registered, and other people are being referred to other services. As Clinton mentioned, you have an excellent accessible fixed route network here, which people have not been taking advantage of. So part of this process is to teach people what is available, what other alternatives are available, so you can make choices, which system that you want to use. Okay?
Could you repeat that last sentence? I didn't hear you. Could you repeat the last sentence?
Sure.
It's important. I didn't hear it.
I was just talking about how passengers with this new eligibility process, they're educated about all of the accessible options that Palm Trans has, not just Palm Trans Connection. So that if a passenger could ride the bus, they're instructed how to do that, they're taught how to do that, they can get a reduced fare card, so they can do it inexpensively. So people now have more options than just Palm Trans Connection. That was, that's a fundamental piece of the new eligibility process. And just a couple of quick slides about ridership. Although when COVID hit, ridership dropped, this is just showing you that ridership is continuing to increase this year. And the same thing is true for hours of service, that hours of service drop, but they're coming back up. So there still is a need to look at some alternatives to meet some of this demand in a less expensive way.
And, and so the last mode, Go Glades, you're very familiar with this service, so we won't go into detail, but it's a service that's provided in the Glades community. It's an on-demand service. It has the operating cadence similar to Uber and Lyft. You hail the vehicle with an app. You can see that vehicle arrive to your curb. The only difference in, in what makes this better than Uber and Lyft is, is we multi-load. Uber is a, usually a one-seat ride. We, as you saw earlier, transport four passengers per hour. And you can see, our ridership is, over every fiscal year, we've seen an increase for the demand of this service. And we see it plateauing at about ten thousand now, but the service is really adding value to the mobility of this, you know, economically challenged community. So just really quickly on some upcoming projects, just so that you know, our Bocherté and Stop Improvement Program is, is off and away. These, on the left is our old shelter. It's exceeded its useful life, and this is a conceptual shelter that we'll be asking the vendor community to bid on. The Facilities Development and Operations Division will help with construction of the shelter sites. And so we hope to select a vendor this year, and our goal is to install and replace about seventy-five shelters per year. The Zero Emissions Transition Plan, we'll be introducing electric vehicles, fixed route buses, very soon. Our goal is to introduce, or to transition our fleet by twenty, by twenty thirty-two, twenty-five percent of our fleet. And the Florida Department of Transportation is fully funding this pilot program. It's a Port St. Lucie Express service from Gatlin Boulevard in Port St. Lucie to the West Palm Beach Intermodal. We'll use MCI coach-type buses to provide this service. This service is currently being provided in Miami-Dade and Broward Counties as express services. And so we are looking to introduce this service, working with the state as a pilot program. We sent out a recent survey to gauge the demand, and the response has really been astounding. And so with the Route Performance Maximization Project, you know, you've probably heard a lot about this very successful initiative implemented in 2018, as we discussed, the trade-offs that go along with deciding the balance between coverage versus ridership. The BCC at that time, in 2018, selected an enhanced coverage model, which essentially kept the core service in place, but asked us to pursue unproductive service, which included elimination of some routes and restructuring of others. But there are clear trade-offs between ridership and coverage. Both have benefits. Ridership is really positioning the transit system mostly where usership is higher, near the urban core. For us, that would be everything probably east of the turnpike or military trail. Coverage goals include ensuring everyone has transit no matter where they live or where they stand. It provides a lifeline, critical access to services for people who cannot drive. It provides access to people with severe needs, and it provides a sense of political equity by providing service to every district or municipality, the concept of, I pay taxes too. So we essentially kept the system the same in 2018, and we identified over sixty-two thousand hours of unproductive service, and we reinvested five million dollars back into the system to make it a more direct, a more linear, a more usable system. And now we go into our RPM two point oh. The RPM two point oh derived out of our ten-year transit development plan, which really is our strategic plan. The TDP is, essentially covers ten years of our vision for Palm Trans. We update this every five years. So we are currently endeavoring in RPM two point oh, which is essentially a three-pronged approach, short-term. And when we say short-term, we mean like this year. Mobility on demand, which is a midterm approach, perhaps one to Mobility on demand, which is a midterm approach, perhaps one to three years, and of course, our long-term vision, which could be anywhere from five to 20 years. And so the short-term, we've been looking very closely at. Here are some short-term peers that we have looked at in terms of micro-transit and using transportation network companies. And Pinellas, Pinellas Sun Coast Transit Authority, that's the PSTA. The Direct Connect, a partnership with Uber, countywide service to and from 26 transit centers, subsidizes the trip by $5. Transfer to PSTA service is not required. So here's some elements of that service. In Miami-Dade, they have the Go Nightly, a partnership with Uber and Lyft. They replaced the late-night and overnight service on several fixed routes. And so they saw that during 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM, ridership was very low, and that they could replace that service with TNCs. It's been very successful, and it's something that we also would like to look at. You know, our Spanish service goes from, you know, 5:00 AM to about 10:30, 11:30 PM at night, where ridership during, you know, 10 to 11 is very low. And so it's something that we are very interested in looking at in the future. In Dallas, riders received up to two free Uber pool rides per day in eligible areas. And so here are just some examples of what we looked at. And so as a part of our TDP, we studied the introduction of transportation network companies in our system. And I'll just turn it over briefly to Yash to share what our findings were.
Good morning, Mayor. Turn that on.
Oh, it is on now. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I want to begin by thanking you for your leadership, and then also the opportunity for us to tell you the story of public transportation here. So I'll jump right into some of the things that we looked on in terms of having the short-term recommendation in terms, on how we can implement the transportation networking companies like Uber and Lyft. Initially, we, as a part of the Transit Development Plan, that's where first, for the first time, we introduced this idea. We also took help from our partners, both Benish and WSPN, coming up with some preliminary zones. These go throughout the counties, so we had zones that were made, and they were throughout the county. We wanted it geographically spread out everywhere. We looked at this from two lenses. One would be efficiency, so bringing down your cost per passenger, having a higher ridership for what you're paying, and then also equity, things like low-income neighborhoods, zero-car households, minority populations, things of that nature. From there, we went into our preliminary zones. So the list that you see now is a list of all the zones throughout the county. We rated some top ones. We'll go to the next slide where you can see the top ones that we came up in our recommendation. So the first zone that we came up in our recommendation directly ties to our low-productive fixed route system in the northern part of the county, which is in Riviera Beach. That's Route 21. Passengers per hour, really low, 7.8. Another one, central west in the county, Royal Palm Beach, was our second recommendation, extremely low passengers per hour, 6.1. And then also one south in Boca Raton, where it overlaps with our Route 91, around eight passengers per hour. And really, something I also want to add here is, I was recently at the APTA American Public Transportation Conference for Mobility, which first and last mile, TNC, these topics are really big at the mobility conference right now. They have been for about six years. And what we really heard in terms of a successful implementation was that you have to pilot. You have to go out there and see how these things would work, because they're going to work differently depending on what area you are in. One thing that everybody kind of agreed upon was that in a suburban context, these work really well, because you have a lower demand, and your cost per trip can be lower when you have a lower demand. So your operating cost kind of goes down. So based on those things, we went into our analysis.
I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Forbes.
Yeah, and just really briefly, here's a current partnership that we've been using for years, and it's partnering with the South Florida Community Services Program, where they offer emergency ride homes. If you take PalmTran three times a week to work, the government will pay for your rides home if emergencies require you to leave work early or you have to work late. And so we really want to expand on this program. We have, you have to sign up and enroll for this, but this is a concept, you know, while it expanded, we think we can get some really good return on. And so we have two slides left. I know it's been long, so thank you for your patience. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bonlaren.
So just to end this, wanted to share with you what we've looked at of some of our other South Florida properties, as well as peer in Jacksonville on revenue opportunities. And I know this conversation's come up, both here at this board, as well as at the TPA in those discussions. And as you can see, Broward most recently passed in 2018 their one-cent sales tax for transit and transportation improvements, which yields about $428 million a year in annual revenue. Miami-Dade, a half a cent sales tax in '02, that Mr. Forbes was a part of that initiative, yields just under $300 million a year. And then Jacksonville, a half cent sales tax in 2000 at $120,000. We shared a couple of data points for you, just from our Transit and Mobility Summit that we did, when we asked about whether folks would support local transit funding, if it would help contribute to those efforts, and just shared a few of those numbers from the data that we produced at that event. And then finally, on some of the board discussion points, as we look at some of the other items, these were a couple of the issues that we wanted to, you know, just put out there for discussion. And obviously, all of this will need to bring back to the board, whether it's looking at TNC options or some of these, and looking at some of our underperforming routes, like Route 52 with a replacement of either first or last mile, and the same goes for 21, or to replace with a mobility on demand pilot on either a 52 or 21. And then the details of which obviously can be worked out and brought back with some options for you as well. And then also on connection, developing a plan to redefine some of the service areas with an alternative transportation options outside that three-quarter mile area, looking at maybe incrementally attaining federal fare limits. Obviously, that involves a number of steps. We have to go out to federal studies that are required in order to bring back those kinds of fare changes for you, and then also discussion on our TD policy and potential changes. And finally, I'll just add, you know, a number of us went to Austin last week and spent some time looking at their transit and transportation plans. And a big part of, I think, what we came back with was just this global planning, and what we need to do, and where we need to be in terms of looking at transit and transportation within our county. And so that plan could include anything from rail enhanced on our current rail systems, as well as looking at new alternatives there, our bus routes, and increases in the availability of that service and the duration of that service and frequency of that. Rail, pedestrian, looking at our streets and some of our signalization that you'll hear about a little bit later today, to encourage some of those rides to move more quickly, as well as looking at some of our circulators and the like, pedestrian-friendly streets, as well as bikes. So those are some of the pieces and direction, I think, that we'll need to hear back from the board today and in the coming weeks to get a better idea of how we might want to move forward with some of that planning in partnership with the county and the TPA and our municipalities. And with that, we thank you for your patience as we moved through a lot of information, and look forward to a discussion on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments? Okay, let's see. We'll have Commissioner Barnett and then Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Todd and Clinton, and everyone for your presentation. Remember, you came to our office and got a good education at that time and again today. I wanted to go back, may sound like a broken record, but I wanted to look at page 10 and page 52. There's a brief discussion of the covered shelters. At a meeting of the municipal leaders in my district a few months ago, this was one of the primary concerns, that there are just not enough covered bus shelters along the routes, in particular in Lake Worth and Green Acres, Palm Springs. I see here there are 309 advertised bus shelters, 200 non-advertised. I wanted to ask you, Clinton, you mentioned that there were new shelters in process being built and some that are being renovated. Can you please give me those numbers again?
Sure, Commissioner. Thank you for, this is very important to our customers waiting, especially in Florida and the inclement weather. And so we are very close to advertising an RFP to select a vendor to manufacture our shelters. And we are looking to add and replace existing shelters, about 75 a year. If we can do more, we will, but about 75 shelters a year over the next five years.
Just throughout the county?
Throughout the county. But of course, we're going to target, you know, the high ridership locations first, where people stand and wait for buses. The city of Lake Worth, what we have been doing is meeting with all the municipalities. I think we've met with probably 12 municipalities to engage them in this process, to let them know that the shelters are coming and that we'd like to work with your staff, because 300 of the shelters are located within unincorporated Palm Beach County. The other 300 are located within the municipal footprint. And so we have been engaging the municipalities with this project so that they can piggyback off us and work with us to replace their shelters as well.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted one other question. Looking at the design of the new proposed preferred style, I see dividers in the middle of the bench. I can't tell if the current style has similar dividers, but I was wondering what the purpose of those dividers were for. I've heard in the past that some municipalities have, or government agencies have done that to prevent or discourage homeless people from sleeping on the benches, using them as a place to sleep at night and using them as a shelter. Was that the idea in mind, or one of the ideas?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I, pretty basic questions. I realize that we were using 2019 numbers, but yet we are using 2022, 23 financial numbers, so the two aren't really lining up.
Yeah, so Commissioner, we talked a lot about, you know, just on the data in here, in the front end of it, we used 2019 numbers just to demonstrate what would be sort of normal potential operating year pre-COVID. And we're still sort of, we're still recovering from COVID numbers. So we use that 19 as sort of a benchmark number. Those numbers are a little bit lower, but they're just about getting caught up to today as we were back then. But from a financial perspective, we wanted to make sure you had the most up-to-date financial piece of what we are budgeting for PalmTran going forward.
I thought...
So that was...
That might be the case, but, so that brings me to my next question. So every year since 2019, we've had less numbers. Ridership.
So yes, in 2019, good year. 2020, not so good. March 2020 was the pandemic. Ridership across the country dropped anywhere from 40 to 60%. And we have been in recovery mode, you know, ever since then. It's a national topic in terms of increasing transit ridership, but I'm very happy to report that, you know, while we were down 30 to 40% during the height of COVID, we have now regained, we're back to about 90% of our ridership system-wide. So we're getting back.
If our ridership was lower, why do our costs go up by millions every year?
Yeah, then you want to answer?
So although ridership did decrease during COVID-19, the cost of material, inflation, fuel, cost of living expenses did not decrease, and we did have to continue to increase our budget in order to meet those demands.
And now, I have a few other questions, if you don't mind. So it did state in here that we get roughly 15,000 people to and from their jobs. I believe that was, you know, one of the following pages, you said it would, of 30,000. So what are the, are you saying that, where did you derive that number from?
Are you referring to where we say that we're within a quarter mile, our fixed route system is within a quarter mile of roughly 300,000 jobs that are within Palm Beach County? So really, that was just to demonstrate that where our fixed route is positioned today is within walking distance, or a quarter mile, of about, just around half of what is considered in the census, the available number of jobs that exist in the county today.
And if it's that close, then why are they still not using it?
Well, a part of the reason is the investment that we've made in public transit. I mentioned earlier during the presentation, the direct correlation to user ship is frequency. It's that concept of time, that most precious commodity that we all, you know, cherish. And so if a person has to wait 60 minutes for a bus, they're probably not going to use it, or only people who are what we call transit-dependent. Your choice rider has the choice to use their vehicle. But when you start dialing up the frequency to, you know, 10 minutes to 15 minutes, as you can see on those routes that have that type of frequency, the user ship is up. So it's the amount of investment in the transit system and the routes.
So I did notice some conversation on, I believe it was page 31, regarding the gas taxes of 34 million. I believe it was 71 million is the projected number.
Yes.
That is going towards PalmTran.
Yes.
No, that's the total number of overall gas tax that the county receives.
Allocates to...
That's received.
Public transportation.
Not just public transportation, but also the roads. That's the total county gas tax. PalmTran is projected to get 34 million.
I'm sorry if I didn't say that clearly. That's what I meant, 34 of the 71 million of gas taxes is going to this...
34 of the 72.4 million, correct.
And I did hear you say that a one-cent sales tax is how other people pay for their public transit. So is it of your opinion that we should ask the taxpayers to pay another percentage to increase their taxes again to pay for the public transit?
What I would say is this, I think that we're at a point in Palm Beach County in terms of our transit system, that we've gotten to a point from an expense perspective between fixed route and paratransit. We've looked at a number of efficiencies in our fixed route, and we've made some good changes that, and we have some others that we talked about today. Paratransit has continued to grow, and is a number that, you know, might not be sustainable at those levels of funding with just our standard in terms of gas tax, ad valorem, and grants that we get. If, as a county, we have a vision that looks at expanding transit countywide, that looks at it, you know, from a bold lens of, do we want more rail? Do we want higher frequency on some of those routes within those quarter-mile of those jobs? Do we want to maintain the level or increase the level of some of that paratransit and curb-to-curb service? How do we want to interact with our cities? If there is a vision that this board wishes or the community wishes, we can't do that with, I think, the resources that we have allocated to PalmTran today within the Board of County Commissioners budget. And I think in order to answer that question, we need to look at all of those different components, have that plan together, and you look at that plan to really tell you, this is what this costs. This is what the 561 Plan costs that the TPA is looking at. This is what some of the additional enhanced frequency costs for PalmTran. This is what municipalities want. We can put and compile, I think, that information together relatively quickly and efficiently within a, you know, six-month, you know, period of time. And I think at that point, that's when we look at that and say, okay, what does this vision cost us? What is that number? And then can we do it within the budget we have? And if not, what are the other options to get there? Most transit properties that have looked at that analysis have looked at a gas tax model. When we were in Austin last week, they both have a gas tax and a dedicated ad valorem that were both voted on by the voters in their community. So, I'm sorry, sales tax, sales tax and ad valorem. My apologies. sales tax, sales tax and ad valorem, my apologies, that they looked at in that. So, you know, different transit properties are doing it different ways. But I think it starts with sort of what that vision is, what that plan is, what that costs. And then this board and the community can engage in, okay, how do we get there? Or is that too much for what we're trying to do?
So before my next question, I would like to be very clear. I would be very against asking people to pay another penny in taxes, sales tax or otherwise, in, for this. I think we need to do a better job of allocating our resources accordingly. And you listed a top 31 rankings, I believe. And if you looked at 21 to 31, maybe there's some room to reallocate those to what we were talking about before, a budget towards maybe vouchers. So that people who can't walk in the rain, or don't want to walk in the heat, or don't have access to a bus stop, can also use dollars towards, you know, public transit just by using Lyft or Uber or whatnot, which would also cut costs, I believe, would it not?
Yeah. And so I think that's a great concept if it's scaled correctly. If we go with the concept similar to what we're doing with paratransit, where we're offering a voucher or a service to the entire county that's on-demand, it is far more expensive than, than offering fixed route service. So we are actually looking at the concept of a voucher system potentially, as we discussed, what Miami-Dade is doing. They're giving a voucher for people that are going to work or leaving work after the ridership drops off after 11:00 PM or midnight. And so that's a concept that we'd like to look at. But if you look at the presentation and what we presented with on-demand service, the most efficient service, and this is just, you know, practical knowledge, is linear. If you go straight, you're more efficient. If you, if you have a circuitous route, which is paratransit on-demand service, making turns, getting out the vehicle, assisting the customer, those are hours and that's additional cost. And so offering a voucher to, you know, essentially to have, have no boundaries will be very, very expensive. But if scaled correctly, we could do it.
I guess that leads me to actually to my next question. So paratransit, I've understood from our previous meetings, is expensive comparatively. But at the end of the day, people are using it. It's handicap people, it's elderly people, it's getting used. My concern is even if fixed route is less expensive per person, per ridership, however we would like to break that down, my concern is it's not an effective use of the dollars. If we have very minimally packed buses driving around, that could be allocated to something that is effective and people can use and easily use. We've had this conversation where I'm not a huge fan of first and last mile, because then we're asking people, all right, take an Uber to the bus station, get on the bus, and then take an Uber again, or a Lyft, to where you're going. That doesn't seem very user-friendly or effective. So this is why I was proposing, let's at least start the conversation regarding taking part of maybe the less-used fixed routes and putting them towards a voucher. And instead of just looking to spend money to our, our wish of what Palm Tran could be, let's like work within a budget and maybe look at areas that we could reduce to then add money elsewhere. And let's be, you know, wise stewards of these dollars, please. Thank you.
Yeah. And Commissioner, just to your point, I mean, I think that some of the examples that we laid out in here are right in with that line of thinking. And I know that you and Commissioner Marino had mentioned that last week at our meeting, how do we look at, you know, maybe some of these underperforming routes and come up with some different models and opportunities to do it. And so that was part of the analysis that Josh shared with you two, to look at, you know, exploring some of those other concepts.
All right. Commissioner Woodward and then Commissioner Marino.
Yes. Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
I was happy you're on that page. That was going to be the first one I started with. I did some quick math, and it looks like monthly, we're looking at 4.1 million for the paratransit, 4.5 million for the fixed route, and 125K for Go Glades, right? So if you go to page, slide 41, I was hoping to talk about your recommendations for how we can maybe work towards getting the cost and efficiency, it's cost and efficiency opportunity on that one. Because, I mean, we're, we're talking 78,000 versus, I mean, it's 600,000 more people being served for 400,000 more dollars. So I was curious, I know you had in your potential staff direction, some ways we could work to lowering that number. Because the next slides after this show where Palm Beach County is, is like double anywhere else. And I mean, we're, I say we're doing an abundantly good job on this one, and maybe we're overabundant on what we're doing. Do you have, like, just give me the hard recommendations on what we can do soon, maybe this, this fiscal year to work towards lowering that number. $52 per person is significant. Could you just rehash some of those recommendations?
Sure. Interesting, talking about efficiency versus effectiveness. The paratransit system is very effective, but not very efficient. And ADA paratransit, because it's a federal civil rights law, there are a ton of federal regulations about when we have to accept the reservations, how long people are on vehicles, the kind of assistance provided. All of that stuff leads to much less efficiency whenever you're scheduling. So you have, as Clinton was saying, you have 1.5 trips per vehicle per hour you're achieving with paratransit. Believe it or not, that's a good number from a national scale. But that's because of the rules around ADA paratransit. So the concept is to transition away from ADA paratransit being the only choice and having something kind of Go Glades-ish. So it's demand response, it's accessible, so anybody can use it, but it's not constrained by the ADA paratransit regulations. So you can attain higher productivity. So you can schedule more effectively, you can, you know, you can negotiate more with people about their pickup times. So you can much higher efficiency. So people then would have that choice. They could either take ADA if they really needed it, or they could take this more efficient service that would be much cheaper per unit. That's, that's what we're looking to explore. Does that make sense?
It does, actually. I was wondering, is there like a hybrid model between the two? So if we're having these, you know, they're going all around the county and they're kind of running empty, is there a hybrid model that we could have for people to be able to use the same, I mean, they have seats as well, right? It's not like it's just a ambulance-type vehicle.
Yeah.
Anyone can sit in them and use them. So could we have a hybrid-type model to where we could have more passengers?
Excellent question. They tried that in, well, I won't mention the system. There's a system out West that was thinking exactly like that. Well, we've got these vehicles. Could we do ADA paratransit and microtransit, which is kind of the general term for this kind of non-fixed route stuff? Could we do that in the same fleet? Why not? So when they tried it, what they discovered was, when they tried to put these kind of general public rides, it messed up the paratransit rides so that they were not compliant. So it, it really is better to have your small, dedicated paratransit fleet do what you have to do legally, and then have the other fleet do the more flexible, less expensive stuff. It's kind of, the analogy I make is like paratransit will be the full-price item at Macy's that's there if you need it. But everybody usually waits for the sale and gets for the, the cheaper one. So that's the model.
And Commissioner, I just want to add that we are piloting that as a result of your approval of the April 18th board item of extension of the paratransit contract. So First Transit have subcontracted with Lyft and Userv. And so you want to just talk about how we'll use both of those contractors?
Sure. So right now, we're running about 77, 76% on time to paratransit. Our goal is 90%. So really not providing the service we really need to for our disabled and seniors out there. So what we looked at with First Transit is we were adding Lyft as a riders' choice program. So Lyft is going to be just like an Uber and Lyft. So they'll be able to sign off as a riders' choice, and they're going to choose to use Lyft instead of Palm Tran Connection because it's so costly. And then with the Userv, Userv is like an Uber-Lift, but it's fully compliant with all the background checks, drug and alcohol and all that. We're going to use that as an ADA overflow option. And they cost less per hour than our traditional paratransit. So this is kind of our first step into that direction. And trying to look at it, instead of traditional paratransit, we're looking at doing a little, something different. And with Userv, we're going to be concentrating on, on the dialysis, subscription trips where people are going to and from employment. So those trips will be more of a one, one-seat ride instead of that shared ride, so we can get them to their important appointments on time.
And, and I just want to also mention, as Todd kind of reviewed our direction and board discussion about the fare limit. As Mr. Richell mentioned, the federal government recognizes that this is a very expensive service. So they allow transit agencies to charge double the fixed route fare. So the fixed route fare is $2. And so we are able to charge $4, which controls demand. And so we are currently at $3.50. I was presented to this in Jacksonville when I ran that agency years ago, where we hadn't attained the federal limit. And, and how we did that, because you have to be very judicious dealing with this population of riders, we, we did, we phased it. So, so they don't experience a 14% hit or increase in fares. We did, you know, a quarter a year until we got to the federal limit. And so that's something that, when you're talking about immediate, it's something that also can be considered. And that, you know, manages demand of the service.
Sorry. One more question, please. On the page 41, with the minimum requirements and the current practices, outside of raising the fare, what do you see is the, the next one that we should, the goal that we should be shooting towards? I was surprised to see the map with that we provide this for the entire county, and it's usually three-quarters of a mile service area. Is that something that we're addressing or?
Right. And I think Mr. Richell kind of alluded to that, that the three-quarter mile requirement is a federal requirement that we provide the service three-quarter of a mile. We currently, we, we provide it all over the county. So the, the idea of what we'd like to propose, and we have to do this incrementally. We won't do this in one fell swoop because you have a lot of folks yelling and a lot of folks impacted. So we, we would like to provide some other type of mobility option outside of that three-quarter mile. So if you're an ADA passenger and you want to go outside of the ADA corridor, our core area, which currently we don't have a core area. Every other transit agency in the country has a core area where you provide, you know, ADA service, we provide it all over the county. So we limit that core area to ADA. And then we provide another alternative such as, hey, take this Uber Lyft or this mobility-on-demand service. Now, it may cost a little more, or it might not meet the time requirements that you require under the three-quarter miles because there are certain federal requirements we have to fall, we have to follow. And that's kind of what we are proposing, to incrementally, you know, go, provide an alternative transportation option outside of the three-quarter mile.
Do you have numbers on how many riders are outside of that service area? Is it even-
Do you want to go back to the map real quick? So if you look at that map, outside of the three-quarter mile is that purple area. And there are, keep, we'll keep going. Yeah. There's, especially south, as you could see, southwest, there's a lot of riders in Boynton and in parts of Boca and West Palm. We get those numbers for you, so I'm not going to say it now. But there's, the big thing is, three-quarters of a mile, we can still provide that service outside there. It just doesn't have to be just like ADA. So we could provide a different service. Because the big thing here, for everyone to understand, is we're going to, we're going to affect people's lives, right? Especially we're going to, you know, so we want to make sure that we do this right. A lot of, so the number one trip for Palm Tran Connection is actually employment. Then it's medical, and then it's nutrition. So you want, you want to make sure we, we do that right. So as, as Mr. Forbes said, we're not, we're not going to just cut service. We want to do it strategically. But we really want to look at, when Mr. Richell says calling it ADA, when someone calls right now and they say, I have to be there at 10:00 AM for my doctor's appointment. Well, my, my call center right now, we can negotiate up to an hour before, an hour after right now. But we're not going to negotiate up to 10:45, then you're late for your appointment. So now we have to negotiate lower. We can negotiate, maybe we'll get you at 9:30. But now, well, I can't get you at 9:30 because the center doesn't open then. So I can only get there at 10 o'clock. So now I have a 15-minute window. It, it, there's unrealistic expectations for the paratransit that we could take away for a majority of it, and just concentrate on that three-quarters of a mile, which makes us more efficient. We could possibly use a different type of service. And that's where we're kind of looking at as well. And one quick thing, because we also talked about TD, the transportation disadvantage, they give us about $290,000 a month to provide service. We get to choose how we want to provide that service. Right now, we provide it for any means. You can do it for anything. Other counties, they look at trip priorities, you know, okay, we're going to look at employment, nutrition, medical, and then the rest, we're going to provide if we have enough funding. Or there's trip limits. You can do trip limits. Every day, we provide 72 trips because that's how much it costs, and then that's it. That's how most counties do it. Here, because we're so generous, and we have the best of everything here, we, we, we provide as much as we can, and over that, and over that, and we, and we overmatch it. So we're supposed to overmatch the grant by 10%. We over, we match it by exponentially, way too more. So we can look at those things. But again, if you take away service, you're affecting those transportation disadvantage folks. So we'd have to find an alternative.
And we can bring back a plan at a future workshop that, that kind of lays out, you know, how we kind of move to more efficient execution of the service with the three-quarter mile ADA federal requirement and the alternative transportation options. We can actually bring back a plan to the board.
Okay. Commissioner Marino, then Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you. In reference to Commissioner Barnett's question, I know that several municipalities use their Art in Public Places dollars to pay for bus shelters. I don't know if that conversation has been had with the other municipalities. I know that we've done it in the north end of the county. So that could be a quick way to get shelters that the county, that Palm Tran doesn't have to pay for. So that would be one easy. The advertising dollars that you showed in one of your previous slides were very small. So, I mean, our buses are going all over the place. They're wrapped. I think we could maybe see an increase of what we charge in our advertising dollars. On page two, I'm sorry, on page 54, you have coverage versus ridership. And I know, I heard, I heard the word equity in all of that. But I think if we didn't try so hard to cover everywhere, we would actually have more riders on the buses. And we've, I think we've given up ridership for coverage. I would like, when you see the number 70 to 30, I'd rather see 30 to 70. So that would be just something to look at in the future, because I know it is something that you're thinking about. On page 57, in your pilot program, you had short-term, you know, first, last RPM. But you didn't have a cost for the Uber, Lyft, and other options. Is that right there? I know you're looking at that in the future. Do you have a cost?
And that's still being developed. But our initial cost, based on other communities that have implemented it, and some of the numbers that we preliminarily have, is between $175,000 to $200,000 for a zone. And again, depending on how wide that zone is, is really how much it will cost. But a typical zone, for example, the Go Glades, which covers, you know, 41, I forgot the square miles of the Glades, but that's 1.5 million annually to provide that, the Go Glade service. The, the, working with the technology, transportation companies is a lot less expensive. And so I think we've estimated that at around 200,000? Yeah.
Okay. And how many zones were you thinking about for this?
Initially, we were looking at three pilot zones.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to, just to compare, the, the fixed route that we are considering transitioning that has very little ridership, almost none, Route 52, the annual cost of that route is approximately $800,000.
So 200 versus 800 is quite, is a savings. I do, I do think that it is time to see if we can get closer to what the federally mandated fare is. I mean, if we go up a quarter, we're close to, just, just on our big bus ridership, that's a $2 million increase per year. So we may want to think about that at a sub-board. And on page 52, you talked about the direct service up to Port St. Lucie. service up to Port St. Lucie. And I do know Marty runs Martin County and comes to our county. But is this something that our taxpayers, our ad valorem tax dollars would go to, considering the people that are riding this are not paying any ad valorem taxes? So somebody can, can someone clear that up for me?
We're doing this on a pilot basis. And right now, FDOT is absorbing that cost. I think it is something, and I was very hesitant on this, because once you start a route, people are not going to want you to turn it off once it's in place. And so we need to ensure that once FDOT backs out, and this board gives us permission to continue it, because I will be bringing it back to you, that it's going to pay for itself. Or others are going to join in and help pay for it, such as St. Lucie County, because we're coming from St. Lucie County, and we're coming into Palm Beach. If we stop in Martin, I'm going to be looking for them to partner with us to help offset the cost to our taxpayers, because we're going to need to pay for this route.
I'm not sure I'd be in favor of our taxpayers paying for this route.
I am with you. That was my point when we said, let's do the pilot. And I only did the pilot to see if it would work, because we do have employees that live up in St. Lucie County. And so we would, that would assist with getting them downtown without being in their cars, per se. However, there's the flip side of it. And after FDOT is completed paying for it, who pays for it? And that is something, again, I will be bringing back to the board.
And we've gotten a clear instruction from the administrator. But I will add that working with the Florida Department of Transportation, they will fund it for three years or maybe more. And what the funding mechanism for this express route, like it is in Miami-Dade and Broward, is really the managed towed lane project. So as we build the managed lane from, you know, Fort Lauderdale, Boca Raton, and north, you know, they will pay for, they will fund this express bus like they do in Miami-Dade and Broward. They fund it through the toll revenue.
Okay. General question. I think maybe you can come back to us in several months with a plan to make paratransit more cost-effective. Like, what are we required to provide versus what are we providing? What are our peer agencies doing as a comparison? And how do we transition and align ourselves with our peers in a more cost-effective and efficient manner? So those would be some of my directions, if that's okay with you, and okay with the rest of the board.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm done.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. In regards to Palm Tran, is it, do the other municipalities pay for Palm Tran, or is it the ad valorem taxes by unincorporated Palm Beach County that's paying for it?
The answer to that is ad valorem, mostly. Now, there are agreements with two or three municipalities where they have asked for, you know, special deviations within their municipal boundaries. So if the route is going straight, and they say, hey, we'd like you to go into King's Point, we then cost that out, and then we enter into, enter a local agreement with them, and they pay for that additional service. But to your point, Commissioner, the ad valorem dollars, in addition to all the other funding sources, pay for the transit in Palm Beach County, including municipalities.
When we made the decision to, the county's supposed to pay, is paying for the cost, did we have a discussion in regards to other municipalities paying for some of that cost?
Commissioner, we, the discussions that we had, and, you know, some of this predates Clinton, and, but I'll tell you, the most recent discussions regarding that issue have been, as we looked at enhancing any service to our existing service that either a municipality wanted, or potentially a community organization, like, I mean, use King's Point for an example, there's a few others that we have engaged with contracts where we've done that. We've been asked to look to those municipalities to help alleviate some of the cost burden. A good example is Lake Worth. Lake Worth was really pushing hard to continue to have transit go all the way to the beach, to the pier, and serve at the casino there. And so we worked with Lake Worth, not necessarily on the operating side of it, but in terms of the capital that was required to do that, and entered into an arrangement with them. So we've tried to be creative on some of those routes. But again, we do have a few contracts, and as others ask for more service, that's how we try to handle those kinds of issues.
You had mentioned, I guess, some of the other counties, they have like a dedicated funding source. If there's a discussion in terms of looking at transportation in Palm Beach County, would, would we, would that mean that potentially that could reduce the burden on the county's taxpayers?
So to that point, yes, there is a potential that that could reduce some of the tax burden on our taxpayers. I think that there would be some level of expectation that the county would continue to contribute a certain amount of money into the transit system that we have on some of the service that we provide. But the opportunity, as we look at growth, as we look at, you know, adding additional service, I mean, those are the kinds of things that that additional revenue source would help offset. But, you know, I think that certainly, the county has been footing the bill primarily for our transit, and particularly bus service throughout the county. So, you know, I think that that would be part of the discussion that we would have.
Mayor, may I? May I, Commissioner Bernard? I think that what we would need to do is look at our budget overall, and determine exactly what that vision for the plan is. But I would be looking to help, to look to offset the impact, the fiscal impact to our budget, looking at this total dedicated funding source. That is what other counties do as well. If there are other things we need to mitigate the situation, then yes, we would go back to looking at our budget. But I would not be looking solely at our budget to continue paying what we pay now, and only use, if we got a dedicated funding source, to expand. No, we need to step back, look at the overall program, and then make a determination on where we're going. Hopefully, we will generate more than what we pay now. And so therefore, it will allow us to be a bit more efficient and to add additional services. Everything that we're looking at, most of these cities we're comparing, or counties we're comparing ourselves to, they have a dedicated funding source. Austin is a prime example that we just came back from. Actually, we're doing a lot of what Austin is proposing to do. But they've got a dedicated funding source, sales tax, as well as ad valorem that their voters voted to dedicate strictly for transit. So we'll continue to work with the TPA, and they are in the audience. We'll continue to work with them, look at various ways to enhance our transit system without it being a total burden on our taxpayers. When we talk about a sales tax, that means everybody that's buying something in Palm Beach County, tourists, et cetera, are going to help us pay for this. So the burden is not strictly taxpayer's burden.
But how do you make sure that if you decide to do something like that, that the cost is not going to continue to go up, and continue to go up? I'm looking at slide 29, the amount that we're spending, you know, from, you know, the fixed route, you know, you're looking at 79.00, almost like $80 million for a fixed route, and $50 million for paratransit. How do you make sure that you're going to create efficiency if you create another layer of government to go and spend more money?
I believe the vision that we come up with, because we're going to need the county, this Board of County Commissioners to buy into the vision, TPA to buy into the vision, municipalities to buy into the vision, in order to sell that vision to our voters, to vote for it. And so we need to be responsible and make sure whatever that vision is, is looking at a very efficient system. And we're starting to do that. We started with Go Glades. We'll continue to review it as we bring back some of these modifications to U.S. staff has laid out. So I think that is a part of it. Also, speaking with our municipalities to ensure we're receiving input from them. I think the idea that came up of talking to municipalities that are not participating in the bus stops, to talk to them also, to see if they're interested in putting in the bus stops. Increasing our advertising, I think this board has made some suggestions that in the past, this board has made some suggestions that we can definitely and will follow up on.
And Commissioner, I would just add to that, the idea of an additional source of revenue may or may not lead to other layers of government, too. I think a good example is here in Palm Beach County, when we did our infrastructure sales tax. You know, it was structured in a way where school boards split, you know, half of that, and then the other piece was shared with the county and our municipalities. We did that in a very efficient manner, the way that that was set up. And it enabled a lot of our municipal partners to look at some of their priorities as well. And likewise, a similar type of situation could be modeled after that, too.
Just to be honest, I, like, right now, based on these numbers, there is no way that I can support a dedicated funding source unless we figure out some efficiency on both the fixed route and the paratransit. So that's my perspective. In regards to the paratransit, I'm looking at, is it slide 33, maybe? If it's, I'm looking, if there are like 1.5 passengers per hour, why is it that we have not changed the composition of the vehicles to make them smaller, and to use maybe EVs? And what are we, like, where, I think that there are potential for savings for the taxpayers. If you, I don't know how many, these big vans, how many people can fit in one of them?
Yeah. You have a very good observation, Commissioner.
I don't want to, I don't want to observe. I want, I want like an efficiency.
Yeah. When you say 1.5, I'm sorry, when you say 1.5 people in a vehicle, why are we using a six-passenger or 12-passenger van? Is a very good observation. The art about providing transportation to the paratransit community is, many of our customers are need mobility devices. They are in wheelchairs. And so there aren't many, you know, sedans that can accommodate that type of clientele. So you're correct, we have begun to introduce more sedans for the folks that don't require a mobility device. So I think we're about, you know, we have about 10 to 20% of our fleet where we use a smaller vehicle. But the majority of our fleet, because we organize the demand, and we might, you know, pick up a person who's able-bodied, and the next trip, because we multi-load, is a person in a wheelchair, we would need the, a wheelchair-accessible vehicle in order to do that.
Clinton, I see so many of these vans with people who don't need to be riding it, that are not wheelchair-bound pretty much every day. So something's not working on the way that it's, it's set up. I think that there are ways that we can save some dollars, because we need to see some efficiency and to save on costs. And I'm hoping that on the fixed route, do we, is there any potential for us to get some EV vehicles to save on fuel? What's the, what's the status on that?
Yes, we are, that's in our plan, Commissioner. We have already allocated dollars in the transportation planning program, the TPA's program, of several million dollars to begin purchasing electric vehicles. Our goal is to transition about 25% of our fleet by 2032, and begin the delivery of our first electric vehicle by next year.
Okay. I'm hoping that when, you know, when we have a discussion in the future, for us to see what can we do to save costs on both paratransit and the fixed route, because the cost is really getting out of hand for us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you. And this is a very, very important discussion that we're having. And I appreciate all of you for the work you did, especially the map. Clinton, I like what you started out, when you said, this is all about connectivity. This is about bringing the county together. And so we need to focus not so much on how much money we're going to raise, again, from the taxpayers, but how we can increase connectivity. We've got the largest county geographically in the southeastern United States. This is not easy to connect. But let's be smart. Couple of little issues. First is, we need to bring the cities into this. I don't know how much the cities are paying for their routes or not. I know I have a county public library card. I can't get into a city library unless I pay. And the cities can't get into the county library unless they pay. Now, I'm not saying that we're libraries. What I'm saying is that connectivity with the cities to the county. Secondly, King's Point was mentioned. And you know, I've got a sweet spot for King's Point. It's not in the city, it's pure county. And I have heard that it has the largest concentration of seniors in this county. In one square mile, you have over 12,000 seniors. I think we need to use their buses. Connectivity is, King's Point has buses. So we don't need a fixed route to, that would traverse that many times to those areas that already have their buses. We need to coordinate with the King's Point buses, how many times they go to the Publix, to the Town Center Mall. This is really a computer program, is what we're looking at, to coordinate with these Century Village buses. Coordinate with, when their buses go, and when, Century Village, West Palm, Century Village County. When their buses go, we don't need to be going on the same route. We just need to be able to coordinate. Jewish Association of Residential Care, it's in the county. It's got many folks, adults with intellectual and physical disabilities. I have used paratransit for our daughter. They fill the bus. But they also have buses, they also have buses. So we don't need, if paratransit's going to go there, or other areas where there are people who have disabilities, maybe we can coordinate, like Mae Vollen. My dad would take Mae Vollen to go over to, from the county to Boca Raton. He'd pay $1. And then he'd give the gal $5 tip. That was my dad. But we, coordination, Clinton, if we could do this, is a computer program, I'm sure, that can help us with this. And when you look at this map, what I see is, first of all, I don't see any, and I'd like to see it, and it could be on, could be on a computer, not on paper, I'd like to see where the trains are going, so that we can tie in with the train routes as well. Somebody gets off a train on Congress, on any of our bus stations, on train stations, there should be buses that will coordinate them to go wherever they need to go. So we need to have a plan where I can see where the city municipal buses are going, where our major senior communities are, what buses they have, so that we can coordinate, so we can save money. It just makes it more efficient. And one other thing that we've forgotten to talk about. that we've forgotten to talk about, Ms. Baker, that is workforce housing. Now, we are developing workforce housing in the county. And I don't see any buses, or not that many buses, that are going to places of employment on the east side to pick up folks on the west side. If we're going to build all these workforce housing units on the west side, how are they going to get to work? So we need to make sure that when folks say, developers say, we're going to put in so many units of workforce housing, where's the infrastructure to take the people who are in workforce housing to work? Because if they're in workforce housing, they don't have two, three, and four vehicles. They need county infrastructure. So we need to think ahead, since we're going to have all this workforce housing, not just by the county, but by the state of Florida, to make sure that we are coordinated with buses to transfer folks to workforce housing. I think that we have work to do, but this is good work. This is success. This is the price of success. So instead of looking at how much more we're going to need to make it efficient, we need to, use your word that you did, Clinton, it was coordination, so that the entire county, somebody from North County wants to come down to the recreation in the South County, and I, I'll tell you the truth, and I'm looking at this, I'm pretty good at reading maps. I don't see too many bus routes that go west of the Turnpike. We have got thousands of people out there, and more are coming, and more want to come. So if we think that we're going to build, if we think we want, we're going to have coordination, I don't want to talk about what we're going to build or not, if we think we're going to have coordination, we need to get those west of the Turnpike. And many of them are senior communities. And if a CLF or an ALF wants to come into our community, they need to make sure they have buses to transport those folks from their ALF to Publix and to the recreational areas, instead of counting on the county. And we're building ALFs left and right. Do they have buses? Do they have buses to transport, do they have paratransit buses to transport? Then don't come to talk to us until you get your infrastructure ready. Then you come to talk to us about building in our Palm Beach County. So the good work is ahead of us, it's coordination. And as we grow, we're going to need more of these, I want to see these lines everywhere. And I think we can do it if we just, if we just coordinate, Clinton, because you've got a wonderful fleet of workers, you're, I've seen, you've got great people working for, for our transit system. Now, we just got to make it 21st century. EVs, it's going to be beautiful. And we've just got to put a little bit of a computer program in here, coordinate everything, make those lights go on, so that we see all our, our, our coordination everywhere, connectivity. Thank you so much for this. I appreciate it. This is the beginning of a conversation on how we're growing. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
I'll make it quick, guys. Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification purposes, what size EV vehicles are we looking to purchase?
The EV vehicles are the fixed, 40-foot fixed route vehicles. We also are looking at our, our fleet, what do we call them, the vehicles that our bus operators use to get to, you know,
Relief vehicles.
Relief vehicles. We are also looking at our smaller sedan relief vehicles to convert to EVs.
I've also just heard from input, you know, a lot of handicap people, even the paratransit buses are hard for them to get into, climbing the stairs and so on. And just because they don't have a wheelchair doesn't mean that isn't a task. So I'd like to keep that in mind. I would love to see something, you know, again, to the point of minivans are a better size vehicle, especially for certain routes, certain areas, more fuel efficiency. That would absolutely help with that particular aspect of it. And also, I'm concerned about maintenance costs. So most costs, because most people know my background and my husband and I own a business, what I'm concerned about are how much are the batteries going to cost when they go? Because right now, just in a Chevy Volt, that battery is $15,000 to replace. That's one battery. So I have some real concerns with maintenance costs, where yes, we're saving on fuel, but then are we spending it in batteries? And I can't even imagine what a battery cost would be on a vehicle for that fixed route system and those large buses.
That's a very good point.
So just please keep this in mind, and I would like to see those numbers, the maintenance costs, the batteries, what are we going to be looking at in an effort to offset fuel costs? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Okay. So I have some questions for you. I know that there are guidelines, studies in regards to transit as it relates to density, and I'm sure you all have reviewed them. I think it would be great, next time you come back here, if you bring that information with us. And, and then overlay that on the densities in our county, so that we can see where it actually makes sense based on, on the data. The other thing missing, I thought, was the circulators. I know City West Palm Beach, through their CRA, pays for circulators here from the train stations, multimodal stations. Those are important, I think that's important information as well. I know other municipalities are looking to have their, and some already do have circulators as well. And so, what role do they play? And, you know, in terms, we talk about that first and last mile, I think, you know, there's, there's something there. We talked about on the paratransit side, you talked about the total number of riders. How many are, are individual riders? I'd like to know that. I'd like to know how they're stratified, too, and their utilization. So, because I'm sure you have some folks that use it quite frequently, some that use it, you know, moderately, and some that use it infrequently, and understanding how we, how, as, what the populations are, so that, I think that would also be illuminating to have a better sense as we, as we move forward, trying to make them more efficient. Have we talked to employers, and this goes back to sort of like the folks that, with the multi-county transportation, and, but I, I think, and we talked about it, it actually came up in Austin as well, employers paying for people not to park their cars. And do, that should be part of our plan, because if we're trying to get and get more efficiency, it seems like, you know, there's, there's costs that employers are bearing, that could either be cut, and then, but also, part, part of that savings could be then passed on to help offset transit and transportation costs. And then, as to your, sort of your discussions on the fixed route, I, I, you know, working with, and I think it's obviously, you guys are talking to municipalities, but obviously, that's very important, if we're looking to eliminate routes that are servicing their areas, and we're moving, wanting to try a pilot, moving into having those discussions with them, and, and whether you go to, you know, and you're talking about eliminating Route 52 because of low ridership, and, and either, I would be okay either doing the first or last mile zone pilot, or with a mobility-on-demand pilot, to see what in fact that, that does. Because as we found out with Go Glades, we had ideas, we thought, you know, we knew what was going to happen, we sort of took, went there in a couple of different steps, if I recall correctly. We sort of, you could go off route, I think it was a quarter of a mile, and then we realized that that wasn't exactly where we needed to be, and then we went to the full-on, on-demand, and, and we've, we've been able to provide a better service at a, at a lower cost, and I think that's, that's turned out good for us. I'm okay with moving us incrementally to get to the federal fare limits. I think, I, I do, and I'm cognizant of everything my colleagues have said as well. I mean, these are human beings that are going to be impacted with this. And this, any disruption needs to be minimized, or hopefully, we can mitigate entirely for it. I thought the options of, if we're not offering full, if, if we're not required to offer the ADA, but we can still offer transportation and not have to carry some of the, of the other regulatory burdens, that could in fact lower our costs. I think that need, should be really fully looked at and looked into. I think there's some, there, I think there might be some really good efficiencies that provide the transportation to folks, but yet lower the costs as well. So I think, I thought that, those thoughts that you brought up were, I thought were enlightening as well, and something I could potentially support. So I think those are the, those were sort of my thoughts and, and questions and requests from you all. With that, I think we have some folks that want to speak to us this morning, and we'll be happy to, to take your comments. Although this is a workshop, we're not making any decisions. As you heard here, we're trying to work through some of these items, understand, educate ourselves, and, and help develop further policies. And so, that's where we're going.
Thank you. I have three cards, Dwight Mattingly, Rafael Clemente, and Karma Sita Mitchell. We have two podiums, please come on up.
Well, thank you, Commissioners and Mayor, for allowing us to speak during this time and have input. Just an observation from the discussion that you've had, that was mentioned by you, Mayor, I believe you were referring to it. But one of the things left out of this entire discussion is land use in Palm Beach County, and how that affects transportation, public transit. When you allow large communities, gated communities to be built in the western part of the county because there's large land there, there's no access for public transit availability when people get older and can no longer drive a vehicle. And so, that creates a greater demand on the paratransit system as a result of that. So whether it's Westlake that has built a community, and we go by there, and it would be within a quarter of a mile, or three-quarters of a mile for us to cover that with paratransit, if you reduced it to that, it's a community that we couldn't service with a bus, maybe. But if you go down Forest Hill Boulevard, when you get west of the Turnpike, just about every single community that is built there is unaccessible by our fixed route 46. And so, for people to get out from inside that community is quite a walk for them. And so, I go back to what has previously been said, why do we not have more people riding to work? And the answer is because we allow them to live in communities where for them to go out and wait at a bus stop, they have to walk a quarter to a half a mile in the weather that we have here, and they just don't want to do that. They love their car too much. So Palm Tran is doing an excellent job in trying to look at how passengers that we pick up give information to us. I'm a bus operator, and I represent the 334 bus operators that we use in the fixed route system. But the challenge is, how do we make that connectivity with, with these communities? One of the things that we have to also recognize in the presentation and some of the route numbers, productivity-wise, is there's things that are going on right now within the county that affect how those routes run. We have the Route 31, which I believe on the slide was number 11, in the number of passengers per hour, and we increased service to that, but we haven't been able to run that Route 31 because of the detour and the closure of Tamrin Avenue, which would be a, a great number of people to pick up. But then, once that opens up, you're going to see those numbers greatly increase. If you look at Route 1, Route 1 is the route that goes down Broadway and, and US-1 all the way from PGA to Boca Raton. That's the highest frequency, I mean, highest number of passengers. But look at the density there. So when we're talking about our county and comparing it to other geographical areas, it's very difficult unless you include all those areas, all, all those concepts in place. I want to speak to the paratransit vans not full. I also represent the private companies and the operators in those private companies. And one of the things that, that was not talked about is many of these vans, in the beginning of the day and the end of the day, have 10 or 12 people on them going to work locations, going to school, and then during the day, they're picking up individuals going to doctor's appointment, or going to a medical facility for, for things. And those operators and how those vans connect, it's a challenge. But I want you to remember, when you're talking about reducing the size of those vans, that you keep in mind the concept of you multi-load at certain times of the day, and you need that size van, and then during the rest of the day, it gets the proper use that it should. And then I mentioned the circulators, because that was brought up. Boynton Beach, Lake Worth, and West Palm Beach, all at one time.
Excuse me, sir, can I ask you to wrap, wrap it up? We, unfortunately, we didn't start your timer right when you started talking, and we caught up, and we've run through the three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, Mayor Weiss, Vice Mayor Sax, Commissioners, and Madam Administrator. Thank you for allowing us to speak at the workshop. I come to you today as the Chair of the Palm Tran Service Board, but I also serve the constituencies of seniors, those DOSSS meal users, transportation disadvantage, my students at Palm Beach State College, and of course, the blind and vision impaired and disabled community to which I belong to. So I have the unique advantage of working with Palm Tran intimately on the TDP Strategic Plan, ERPM, the CEP, and all of these things. And I have a vested interest in seeing the efficiency of Palm Tran improve. That being said, the constituencies of voters that I do advocate for and support, I encourage to become self-efficient or self-sustaining in the way that I am. Well, I worked 14 hours at the college last night, back tomorrow. Without Palm Tran, I wouldn't be able to do my work as a professor. My students complain and of mental anxiety and illness because of their lack of transportation. Seniors are on a fixed income, and the majority of the riders on paratransit are on a fixed income. I've recently been displaced from the senior housing because of my new income, but yet, it's like still being on a fixed income, okay? Thanks to you all, I'm the recipient of a ship home buyer's assistance grant, which I'm hoping to use to purchase my first home. But when I'm paying 50% of my net income on rent before food, transportation, or any other bills, it is frightening to think about the cost of paratransit going up. So I'm in a conundrum between trying to help Palm Tran become more efficient, but also being able to live. I can tell you that our choice riders are soon going to run out of choice, and will need to use, use public transportation. And all the people becoming aged and disabled may need to use paratransit. So I've heard everything that you've all had to say, and I'm, I'm so humbled by your leadership and the holiday service that you gave to us, which has been amazing in our lives as disabled people, being able to now actually go somewhere on a holiday, even if you don't have family, and the extended service. We are so very grateful. But in order for us to continue to live productive lives and to utilize workforce housing, we need workforce transportation. And so, I think, as Commissioners have said, you know, Commissioner Sax, you know, we need to think about the housing that's being built. If we're building housing out west, but we don't have transportation to support it, or if paratransit isn't going to allow me to get to my new house, then it's, it's not productive. So three minutes is not a whole lot of time for me to speak to these issues. And you all know, or at least I know, I forgot to welcome Commissioners Baxter, Barnett, and Woodward, because you don't know me, but I'm vision impaired. I can't see any of you on the dais, right? And I look normal. So that being said, I'd like to entertain a meeting with you all at some time to show you my vision for transportation. Thank you so very much for your time and your Thank you so very much for your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, Rafael Clemente, Executive Director of the West Palm Beach Downtown Development Authority. We are a special district, for those of you who don't know me, I know the organization I work for, we're a special district that serves downtown West Palm Beach. In many ways, one of them is transportation, increasingly is transportation. I have regular conversations with Mr. Forbes and his team, in fact, we are working on a program right now that will support increased ridership for transit to and from the downtown district, as well as within the district. I'm here today, I was here today to hear this conversation between your staff and you all as leaders, and to urge you to support, I think as Commissioner Moreno put it, in a sense, quality over quantity. We have a big challenge in Palm Beach County with affordable housing and transportation. I think the last time I looked at the statistics, it's something like 60% of average home income in Palm Beach County is dedicated to housing and transportation combined. Obviously, we just heard from the speaker before me, for some, it's higher than that even. If we are going to continue to support workforce growth and job growth in Palm Beach County, and our, never mind even growth, our existing families here, we have to figure out the transit piece of this puzzle. Right now, in, just in the downtown West Palm Beach area, there are 30,000, approaching 40,000 jobs in our little one and a half square mile area that we're in right now. The same sort of ratio we see in Boca, in Delray, in Gardens, our areas east of 95 are getting denser, they're getting more desirable, and they're getting more expensive. Workforce transportation is a key to our success and a key to our continued growth. It's hard for us often to envision not being able to drive a car, but when you hear from people like those who spoke before me, and when I speak to people who work in downtown, many of them cannot afford to operate a car, or don't have the physical ability to operate a car. We often think of jobs as those jobs that are, you know, CEOs, or C-suite jobs, but I'll give you an example of a business like Rocos Tacos, for example, employs about 80 people across all shifts in one week. I promise you, most of those people are wage earners, and they're not, they would love to not drive, if they could, and we would love them to not drive, because that would free up more road space. So as we go forward, as you all go forward, it sounds like there are some difficult decisions to make, but quality, public transportation is a cornerstone of good places and a cornerstone of economic development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay. I think we are all done with this item.
Thank you Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Okay, our next item is going to be, I believe it's short, so I believe we can get it done before lunch, and then we'll, we can take a break for lunch. And that's going to be the donation of a bicycle pump track to Palm Beach County, presented by Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, we now segue into Bicycle Pump Track. So at the table with me is Jennifer Sorrello, and she is the Parks and Recreation Director. So just as a brief introduction, Palm Beach County has received a proposal from Palm Beach Pump Track LLC for the donation of a bicycle pump track. Palm Beach Pump Track LLC is a 501(c)(3) organization, and in the audience, we have Jennifer Kratz to represent that agency. This pump track has the potential to expand on the amenities being offered in our Parks and Recreation System. Staff has analyzed the proposal, and we have held extensive discussion with Administrator Baker, and upon that recommendation, it is being advanced to the board for your input and your direction. So please allow Jennifer to make a brief presentation.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your time this morning, and thank you Dorit for the introduction. So Palm Beach County Parks and Recreation was approached by the nonprofit, and as Dorit said, this proposal augments what our department already provides, as way of bicycling, so we're shifting the conversation here a little bit to recreational bicycling, and our mountain bike trails, our pathways, but also BMX, Okehele BMX, and many opportunities, specifically freestyle bicycling, and that's going to be key as we move through this analysis. So what is a pump track? I think Paul's got the controls, thank you. Paul Connell, my Deputy Director, will be controlling. So a pump track, and we did put the word bicycle in front of it, just so it made sense to people that don't know what a pump track is, but it's really for anything with wheels, and it's a flat surface loop where the rider of the bicycle or skateboard, anything with wheels, uses their own momentum to propel themselves around a low-level undulating track, so everything lower than five foot, and using their own body motion to propel themselves so they don't really even have to pedal once they get started. The proposed track would have one loop for beginners and younger riders, and then a second loop for more advanced riders. It's basically a playground for everything with wheels. I do have a video, but I'm only going to show it if you really want to see it, it's basically people in motion using a similar pump track, so we can revisit that, or if you're interested. Okay. And then there's an image, the next one, it kind of shows you this undulating asphalt loop of folks to use with their bicycle. So next, we evaluated whether there was a public need for a pump track, and again, this was an unsolicited donation that augments our current programming, but the thing that we really found was there's no other public pump track in Palm Beach County of this caliber. There are some smaller tracks, but they're restricted either by residency, or you have to pay a fee to get into them, they're privately held, so this would be open to the public, no fee. The closest track is Holloway Park in Miami, but you do have to pay to even get into Holloway Park, in the park, so that would be different as well. It's not the same as BMX, a lot of people see it, and they're like, oh, that's BMX, but if you're familiar with cycling, you know this is a little bit different. It lowers the barrier, it's, again, in many ways, physical barriers, financial barriers, height barriers, introducing the sport. Okehele BMX reports that a lot of people show up at their door and want to try the sport, but you have to pay $6 to get in, and that facility is really designed more for racing, it is an Olympic sport, and so it's really, that facility is nighttime weekends designed for racing, where this is more an introduction to the sport of freestyle bicycling. And although it's open daily for free, when we do special, permanent for special events, it would be an asset to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission, and I have spoken with George Lindley, and it would contribute to our overall economic impact with events a few times a year as qualifying events, basically seeing how many times you could go around the pump track in a certain amount of time. Again, we mentioned that it is a nonprofit that is proposing this donation, they valued the proposed donation at $350,000, and the concept is they would construct, they would fully fund and construct the pump track, and then turn it over to the county for operation as a public asset for public use. They're targeting 10,000 square feet, and that's very purposeful, because those qualifiers, those event qualifiers, should we ever want to permit them, would require a minimum of 10,000 feet. But it does have that beginner loop as well. And so we'll move on to the proposed location of the donated pump track. The proposed location is in District 2, Okehele Park, the north side of the park. It's centrally located in Palm Beach County, and it has some rider proximity that I'll show you in a second through a map to Okehele BMX and the Shark Wake Park, which have similar kind of audiences for participation in those sports. It does have existing restroom and parking in the area identified, and it's adjacent to disc golf, our dog park in Okehele Park, and other occasional special event uses. So we do, we know, always as a park system, we consider noise for people recreating, but also adjacent homeowners, so we took that in consideration. So this is the map of Okehele North, it's quite a big park, and the red circle indicates where Okehele BMX already exists, the blue circle is actually Shark Wake Park, and that's operated by a concessionaire, and then the subject site would be the proposed location of this pump track, and there is asphalt pathways throughout, if you ever participated in the county employee 5K, you know there's asphalt pathways connecting this entire park, and it would connect those three facilities as well. And so a few other things we considered from a park operations standpoint, risk management and legal considerations, and I know our county attorney's been briefed, but also our Director of Risk Management, Scott Martins, here in the office. So there is a Florida statute, it's in the motor vehicle laws, but it's interesting because it has very specific recreation liability and immunity language to encourage public entities to allow for certain things. So skateboarding is one of them, and that's why it kind of is in the motor vehicle laws, skateboarding, freestyle bicycling, paintball of all things, and equestrian use. So we have recreational immunity if we do certain things, except for cases of gross negligence, of course, but it does encourage us to not only build but operate these types of facilities. And then signage would include a language regarding helmets being required, the inherent risks of play, and then the state statute also requires us to post that parental permission is required for anyone under 17, because again, motor vehicle laws, so anyone under 17 would be required to have a parental waiver on file with us, and we already do that at our West Boynton Skate Park, that people can stop by and do that. And then maintenance considerations, always a big thing for us in Parks and Recreation. Daily operational maintenance, we believe can be absorbed by our existing staff at Okehele Park North. We do have a restroom in the area, it will receive more use for sure if this donation is conceptually approved, but it actually counters with less area to mow, because they're building something on that area. And then we would need to check for debris, similar to our pathways, make sure we blow it off, there's nothing that's an obstacle on the path. Capital maintenance, asphalt resurfacing is really the biggest concern every five years or so, and that's more frequent than when we would do our roadways in the park system, but we feel like because of this type of facility, that's what's recommended, and we would look for this to be funded by donation. So we would address that in the agreement, should the board conceptually approve the So the next steps, if it's the board's pleasure to conceptually approve this donation from the nonprofit, we have several county policies that would apply. Donations to the county, we have a sponsorship and donation policy in Parks and Recreation, about how we acknowledge that, but the biggest one would be the capital improvements to county facilities by non-county entities, and this would involve the facilities, Development and Operations Department, anytime anybody's building anything on county property, including in our parks, Isme and her team are involved in that as well. We would bring back to you an agreement, so we'd go back with the nonprofit, with FDO, negotiate an agreement with them, and then bring that back to you for final consideration. And that's really it, so any questions? And again, Jennifer Kratz is here with the nonprofit, should you have questions for her as well?
Vice Mayor, and then Commissioner Baxter.
Valerie, are you going to use it first?
I think the mayor volunteered to be.
That's what I heard, I didn't want to volunteer, but.
In the Wake Park, yeah.
Tell you what, if the mayor does it, I'll go after him. It seems like, by the way, it seems like a very wonderful idea. I've never seen one, never been on one, but I think that it is something that we should certainly add to this park, and I think that it would also give an opportunity for teenagers to have something, physical activity to do that's exciting and fun, and I think it's wonderful, and thank you for putting this together.
Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to say thank you guys, this is amazing. A mom of three boys, they would absolutely love this, so thank you.
What about a dad of three girls?
And a dad of three girls, I'm sure, excuse me. I don't know what that's like, so I don't want to speak to an experience I'm unfamiliar with.
I do support this, and as a dad with three girls, I think that we need to dump the pump.
Dump the pump, alright.
There you go.
If there's no objection, and I don't see any objection up here, that, so you can, we can say that this is conceptually approved, and to move forward and look forward to bringing it back to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, and appreciate the opportunity to have more recreational amenities for our residents and visitors. All right, we are coming up to our lunch hour, leave this to boards, oh, we have some cards? Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you're still in the audience, we actually have two cards, James Brown and Jennifer, credits.
Kratz.
Kratz. Apologize.
Hi, my name's Jim Brown, I'm an attorney here in town, and I am a frequenter of the Holloway Pump Track, I made a few notes, I think this is really, I've been working to, with Velo Solutions, I'm not an employee of Velo Solutions, I've traveled the country, going to pump tracks all over the country, Red Bull is the series promoter, the UCI is the world sanctioning body for bicycle racing at the highest level, and they've teamed up, and they see the value. And so cycling, I've raced my bike my whole life, I've been a mountain biker my whole life, in the last five years, I've been pump tracker, talked to Jennifer about her project, but pump track's a unique thing, right? So when you go to a pump track at any park, so there's a big park in Tallahassee, John Brown Park, the most used amenity in the park is the pump track. You cannot believe how many people are out there, Tom Brown is especially unique because they have a pavilion area with some shade, they have barbecue pits, and the parents go out there, and it's like a Sunday thing, my wife and I have been up there a couple times, it's just a unique environment. The thing that's the coolest thing about pump tracks is, the little kids you see on these pump tracks, at four years old on their Strider bikes, there's a separate pump track loop at the track that Jennifer has laid out for little kids on pedalist bikes, but you see these kids down in Holloway, on the big track, at any age, like, and we're helping the kids, and they're going along, and then you got another kid who's racing BMX, he's 12 years old, and he's there with his dad, his dad's 40 years old, and the dad hasn't been on a BMX bike in years, but now he's getting back into the bike, and then I'm there, you know, whatever age I am, and it appeals to, the thing that's so unique about pump track, right? So if you have a skate park, and I go to skate parks all over the place, you have to be a certain caliber athlete to enjoy a skate park, right? But the performances are phenomenal, right? These kids are great skate park kids, are just incredible athletes, some of the best athletes in the world, and they're not on national teams or anything. The pump track, though, is a unique opportunity to generate the same caliber of athlete with little kids and big kids alike, at all skill levels, you don't have to be an expert. The kids show up on their scooters, four years old, and they're pump tracking by the end of the day, and they're having a ball. And it's, when I was there last Sunday morning, the thing that was really cool was, I was there for three and a half hours, and I brought one of the city commissioners from the city of West Palm down there, she loved it, we were trying to get something going on over at Phipps Park, and a couple other locations, but the thing that was most striking to me was, I have a 21-year-old daughter, 22-year-old daughter, just graduated college, and there was a group of girls that came down that were in between the ages of 20 and let's say 24, 25, like, where do you see, like, female empowerment sports, where these kids are going out trying, and they call it extreme sports, but just going out and having fun, right? Young women going out and doing this thing and participating, it was just, I was blown away, I loved it.
Thank you very much.
I think this is a great opportunity for the county to take a step in a really positive direction. I'd do anything I could do to help, too. I'd love to have a little volunteer bike thing for little kids, and have bikes available when the time comes.
Thanks, Jim, thank you so much, and thank you everybody for welcoming us here. So I am Jennifer Kratz, I have met everybody, just about everybody here, so obviously my goal and intent to be a part of the community, I have been here for about 12 years now, and I am the president, current president, for the past six years of Okehele BMX. So my goal, as a lifelong cyclist, is to improve and increase the awareness that Palm Beach County offers to cycling communities, both recreational and from an athlete development standpoint, so living in a county that didn't have a pump track as being one of the most fundamental training facilities for athletes of all ages, and I call it kids from ages of 1 to 99. So my goal obviously is to bring the pump track to Palm Beach County, increase the awareness of what it can do for our county, and then hopefully bring more pump tracks. of what it can do for our county, and then hopefully bring more pump tracks and more people to Palm Beach County because this would be a place that kids of all ages can come and recreate safely in our parks for free.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you very much, and thanks for being here. Okay, so.
Enjoy lunch.
Thank you. So getting to lunch, just want to get direction from the board, is an hour, or do you want 90 minutes for your lunch today?
One hour.
One hour. Okay. You have what?
She said I have an hour.
Okay. All right, we're going to take an hour for lunch.
Can we do one hour?
See, at 1:00. Or 1:02.
1:03.